Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is to say the Pledge of Allegiance, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for.
Thank you. Okay. First, next agenda item is public speak. Do we have any public speak? Anyone? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our main agenda item, which is the RAM multi-use turf field project. So I, I obviously wasn't at the last meeting, or did I have an opportunity to watch the video? I did read the minutes and had some discussions with Diane outside the meeting. Kind of understand a little bit about what went on and kind of where the board seemed to be in this project. I think that I can say that I'm, I'm aligned with the board on this. Obviously, everybody discussed it and. Joanne volunteered, excuse me, I still have a little issue with it. Joanne volunteered to put together the draft letter, which she distributed to everybody. And I have that in front of me. So I guess the question is, do we need to have any further discussion over this topic? Or should we review the letter and, and discuss it? That as it stands now?
I mean, I think if you're in agreement that we should do this, then it's really just the drafting the letter, you know, how the letter reads. I think the rest of us were already on board. So we just didn't want to, I think, call off and do it while you were in Germany without your agreement.
Well, better to be unanimous, right? I guess the only thing I would be concerned about is, you know, and I suppose we can do it without a unanimous vote. We know that Kurt is in favor of the, the letter because he responded. We don't really have Linda's input, I don't, you know, I don't think. I did skim through the board, but I haven't had a chance to read it directly completely. But so what I like to do is maybe share it and we can go through and kind of just review it and discuss it. I'm going to apologize in advance because I was an English major, spent a lot of time as a technical editor. So I may offer some suggestions that are just not in content, but in terms of form.
Can I say one thing before we get started?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mark. I want you to know that we weren't overstepping or trying to. But because we had that other meeting, we knew we were going to have this meeting. We had to have something concrete. You know, at the time to decide and please feel free to critique, edit, slash things out. I just wanted to get something out there that I thought was, um, what's the word? It's been a long week at work, but.
Representative of the boards.
Yeah, and not critical. You know, I didn't think it was critical, kind of tried to offer support in some ways and whatever. So yeah, so there you go. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think it's good. Um, you know, what I read, so I don't have any real issues with what I've read so far in terms of the content, but I do think we should, should review it.
I made some comments on that as well. I'm not sure if everybody saw it.
Yep.
Oh, good. No, I didn't see any comments except for Kurt earlier.
Oh, yeah, I sent that maybe about an hour ago.
So what Louise has suggested is maybe adding some of the text that Eric had. Amanda, can you let me share my screen?
I mean, I have the letter up anyway from the email. My, my commentary, you know, since you're going to hit the other bit, the only thing I'm kind of noodling around about in terms of the content. And, you know, the one part of that is critical, and this is something I've banged on about myself because I think it's true. Is the bit about the timing and the way this is set up. That is pretty critical and I think maybe deservedly so, but if you're trying to soft pedal it a little bit, maybe that's the part we could revise, but the rest of it, I agree. And I think the more context we can put into the numbers, the better. You know, maybe, and the only other thought I had was whether we wanted to specify the, the precise hit to Andover. You know, the letter as drafted has the the, the total cost, project cost, which is obviously the bigger number. But in terms of like what it does to our budget, which if memory serves, you know, it's over 10 years and it's about 70 a year. But I forget the exact number, to be fair.
All right. That's a good point. I think if we had the actual numbers to the, you know, the impact of the town of Andover, that does have some, it carries some additional weight.
There is more information on that, not email, but from Eric. He went on to the next paragraph, he went on to say about the 70,000. But I wanted to make sure that, you know, that last paragraph, the last sentence, this works out to be 40% of the budget. I think that's speaks for itself. And I, you know, I'm not sure whether putting too much information might be too much. And just keeping it simple.
Yeah, we don't want to bog down too much. I agree.
But there is, you know, additional information on there. That, you know, Eric, it was, that was very interesting as well.
If anyone saw, but in the River East last week, there was a letter to the editor from one of the Hebrews Selectmen.
Yes.
And his points were interesting.
What did he, no, I didn't see that Diane. What was the gist of it? Do you remember?
It was about the injuries and citing, you know, more injuries on artificial turf. Which is one thing that Adrian has been harping about. And there was a thing out there that he talked about on City of Holyoke. They're suing several country companies because they had a turf field installed and they have problems with it. So, um, and he also talked about that there's really not lower maintenance causes and there's still, and it's still not recyclable because he talked about the company that they hired saying these claims, but nothing from their perspective. Do you know what I mean? It's from the company's, it's a sales pitch. We don't know. It's fact.
I thought in our, you know, reaching out to the public or the voters that since we are the Board of Finance, we should first focus on that. You know, like, like you guys said, I didn't want to put, I tend to, and my work things are like so involved. So I tend to put a lot of information and I get that, that it's hard to get through. So I thought just putting the big number out there, you know, and letting people see how much it's going to cost and then it's going to be a 10-year debt. Who knows what's going to happen in a couple of years, but I mean, I've been trying to navigate, I'm new to Facebook. I didn't want to have it when my kids were growing up and I wanted, I trusted them and they had their forum. So I'm getting into it now. So I've been trying to go on this Andover support thing, but I never can find, you know, it's always the last thing. So I haven't been able to see the discussion. I'll try it again later. Someone told me there's quite a bit of discussion on there, which I think is good. So has there been? Do you think the townspeople are jumping in on Facebook and, you know, reacting?
There was one thing on the Andover Support Network with Jeff Murray, you know, talking about the cost and how it's not a real and coming out on his personal saying no. And another gentleman in town supporting it, going back and forth tit for tat. So it was kind of.
Yeah, I think. I haven't seen it and frankly, I'm, I'm not particularly interested in it. I guess it is a, you know, it does, it is a gauge, but it's a gauge only of the people who are really involved in Facebook, you know? And personally, I, I've kind of spent time on it occasionally, often not, just because I don't have the time. You know, it's, I'm not sure how useful it would be and, but, you know, if there's anything that is new brought up there, I think that that's of value. But I think, I think that I think, you know, I think that way Diane has kind of crafted this is, I'm sorry, Joanna's crafted this. Trying multiple threads of thought here. It doesn't always work. I think it's, it's sensible. I don't know that we want to get, yeah, I don't know that we want to necessarily get into the positives and negatives of a turf field versus a grass field. I think we leave that up to the administration, you know, assuming that they're doing some due diligence. But I think that just highlighting that, that, you know, A, we do not feel it's necessary and B, we just can't, we can't support that given the financial. Yeah, costs involved, you know, and is there, you know, is this really a necessary spend? You know, I think we keep it simple like that. And I do think maybe adding some of the impact of the dollar, the actual dollar impact would, would make sense. That puts some real information in front of the voter, but I think that we need to kind of have that.
The townspeople need to know how much it's going to cost us and for how long.
So yeah, if you think about it from the perspective of what we do, if it's 70,000 a year, we're in a $70,000 hole day one. And we start our budget process, right? It just taxed it off. And, you know, that's, it's a decade where we have to deal with that. And, you know, whatever the number exactly, the number is with 72 or whatever. It's, you know, that's something that's concrete that can be explained. And I think that's our, our, our core complaint here is that we, and I think this was articulated well in the draft, that we just struggled mightily to pass a budget and was ultimately zeroed out to get it passed. And then we get hit with this. That's the core complaint. In a perfect world, we had unlimited funds, maybe doing something like this is fine, but it's, it's all about the context. So, I mean, I'm largely fine with it. I mean, I could speaking it here or there, but it's basically good. And my only thoughts were, A, if you wanted to talk about the timing or not. And again, I've banged on about that myself. That's absolutely stuck to my craw. So I understand it being in there, but whether we want to go there. And then the other one would just be the breakout of the cost to Andover. Those were my only real comments.
Timing, I'm not sure what you mean there, Rob.
The bit she talks about how we just got to the budget. I mean, this is, this is something I've said before too. We just got through the regular budget process, right? This wasn't part of it. The moment we pass the budget and the temperature drops and people stop paying attention, up this comes. And to me, that's just all sorts of fishy, you know, ram it through in a low turnout referendum. Now, how accusatory we want to be on that in this letter is the thing I'm questioning. I think it's true. You know what I mean? But that's the one bit that, you know, isn't just the facts, right? That's us. I think reasonably speculating, but that's my take on it. And I gotta, I really gotta burn my butt of bonded about that. It really irritates me. But, you know, it's a question of whether it goes in this letter. That's all. That's what I'm saying. And I'm just, I'm not sure. I'm waffling all over the place on it.
The only thing I want to bring forward is we, you know, we talk a good game in the meetings. And I mean, I put things in the paper and stuff and I totally get what Rob just said. But it's going to continue to happen if we don't at least put a sentence in. And maybe I'm too new and I'm used to just being very direct and upfront. And so I'm okay with taking it out, but I feel like this is going to keep happening. If, so maybe we could say something like the timing and bringing this issue forward, you know, I didn't need to put is suspect at best. Like I agree, that's a little much, but.
That's the only part I would tweak. I'm not even saying, take, I'm not even saying, take the rest of it out. It's the suspect at best that struck me as like.
The second paragraph here.
First paragraph.
It's the last sentence in the first paragraph.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. Yeah.
The rest of it is factual, you know, completely factual. That's the, that's the sort of the accusation. I think it's true though. So, you know, I'm not saying we've taken out, I'm saying we should think about it.
Right, right. It was shocking to me when we just took a sigh, got the zero or whatever. And it was painful, like we all dedicated a lot of time, you know, I wasn't even on the board yet. So I just feel like it, but again, it doesn't have to be this letter.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be from us, you know, I, I get it. And I always want to be respectable and those are the words I was searching for, professional. But I'm also not afraid to stand behind my points, but I don't expect the whole board to jump into that right now. So I, I respect all of your opinions.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, yeah, that's, that's literally that sentence is, was the only thing that, that struck me as, you know, more of, more of a, of a combative tone. It's, again, I don't think it's wrong. So if everybody thinks we should go there, let's go there. I'm with you. I just wanted to raise it because it, when I read it, that's the part that peaked, you know, I cocked an eyebrow. That's all. And then my only other non-stylistic comment is a bit about adding in the 70K to Andover. And that's it. That's the rest of it's great. Does what it needs to do.
I personally would be in favor of removing that sentence that Syla highlighted on the screen. It's, you know, while it may, you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, I guess you're not going to say it's factually true. I think that the tone of the letter is, is very, it's reasonable and professional until you kind of get to that point. So I would, I would suggest we remove that.
We could, we could soften it a little bit instead of putting is suspect at best, we could say is unfortunate.
Or is problematic.
That's a nice weasel word, right?
It's neutral, right? I mean, it is a problem, you know?
Yeah.
Not necessarily pointing fingers and saying that somebody chose it. Even if we think that might have been the case, you know?
You know, if you think of, if you read the letter without it, just pretend it's not there. The next paragraph goes into why it's problematic.
Why it's problematic.
It may be, you're saying, you can say it without saying it.
Right, right. Well, I think it does say that, yeah.
Yeah, a reasonable reading is.
Right there, when most of the taxpaying public is busy or vacationing.
Yeah, and, and that part is true. So it's, it's not, it's not, either one is true or false. It's a, it's less speculative. So, you know, I think it works, but I also am open to if there's a way of saying something like that, but softening it, I'm also okay with that. Again, I'm not taking a real strong position here on this. Just my, just my thoughts. I write a lot of letters for on behalf of the company and we, we all, we pull our punches a lot. Let's put it that way. And maybe that's coming through here. Since I'm the face of the big red umbrella at times, I have to be, you know, not say certain things.
I think the letter would be just fine without it. I mean, I, it just, I was just adding it because I believe it.
Oh, I hear you. I'm with you.
Like we all do because we were pretty shocked. Like, I'm like, what are we talking about?
We just got through.
Right. We couldn't even get, and again, I, I love the education too, but I mean, how could we even think about this when we just, you know, had the bleeding on all sides. So that's all. I think the letter is just fine without it. It doesn't, I mean, I don't know if you've written, written letters as a board anyways, so.
Since I've been, but yeah, so, yeah. Be able to make, make edits here. I guess my, my Microsoft license seems to have expired or something like that, but but what I would, what I would suggest is that we maybe, you know, this, this sentence is good. If this item were to pass the town referendums and Andover Hebrew to Marvel, three towns would divide this debt. And then we could there add a sentence that Andover's portion will be approximately X thousand per year. We don't know that number, but we can get it. I mean, is that the, is that what you're kind of suggesting, Rob? We have something specific like that. And then, and then we, the members of the Andover Board of Finance, I don't think we need to say publicly state because that's going in these paper. I just cleaned that up. That, that we follow, although we support high school athletics and the benefits to student population, we're not in favor of this resolution. And we have to take out that this times. And then I would take out this sentence too.
There was a word limit anyways. I think this is probably over their word limit, so.
Oh, there is? Okay.
Well, then that's good.
So there we go.
If there is, I think we probably need to trim it down to try to match that because otherwise we don't want that. Do not want the, the editor there editing this if, if at all possible. Just, you know, we would like to be what we're saying, you know, I mean, I'm sure they would do it reasonably. It's just, it puts the onus on them and I think that we try to keep it down and maybe this way to do that.
I just Googled that and if this is correct, it says 300 words. For the editor to the editor.
Oh, it is 300. Yeah, yeah.
You don't know what this is, right?
I don't know what that is, but can word tell us?
It's on the bottom. It's on the bottom. Oh, get rid of that sentence and you're all set.
They print letters that are longer for sure.
Yeah, but I think it's just in, in the interest of protecting communication, we probably want to turn that down again. So there's a couple of things we could do, I think. I, I, I think we should vote on the final letter as a as a Board of Finance. So we, we can either edit, try to edit the letter and either have another meeting or we could try to do it here. Or we could, we could authorize one or more of us to revise this down, but in the same spirit. And then, you know, take it down to the, to the word limit and then submit it on behalf of the Board of Finance. If everybody's comfortable that that would, you know, the doing so would basically retain the, the message here without misstating anybody's position. But everyone would need to be in favor of that, I think. I, I'm okay with that.
Can I say that I would edit it since I start, I definitely will do everything you said. I mean, I have the draft here. I have a copy here that I'm writing on as we speak. Send it all to you again. Make sure you all sign off on it. And then I don't have to be the one submitting it to the editor. I don't mind who does that, whoever, I mean, I will though.
I think that gets into some gray territory though with public access, because when you do anything like that, Joanne, it, it technically becomes a meeting. If you're including all the board members and something like that. It, it has the, if you're discussing something, it, it, it ends up becoming potentially a meeting per se. So we have to be a little careful about that, about, about changing content or whatever. So, so I think I'm not an expert. I did go through a seminar or two on this when I joined the board. And I, I do think though, that that's, that's a little tricky if everyone's involved. We might deputize one or more of us to revise this and then, and then send that out, I think would be okay. Especially if we're not really changing the content for any intense, all intensive purposes. We're just editing it down to, you know, to meet a word limit. It makes sense. I think that that's probably okay, but I think that we would, we're stepping into dangerous territory if we, if we send it around and agree on content and then send it out.
Of course. I'd be happy to volunteer to help you, Joanne, if you want.
If I can go to the Google Docs document, it's letting me edit it. I don't know if you would see it then, though.
Sharing, you could, you could do it.
No, I mean, I don't have it up. I have it up out of my email. And I went in and it said Google Docs edit. And I, I mean, I haven't worked with Google Docs all that much. But it seems to be taking and I'm, I'm editing it in suggestion mode. It basically redlines it, although it's green in Google Docs, I guess. So, and I'm just doing what we've talked about so far and trying to pull out just a couple of maybe extraneous words to get the word countdown, but otherwise leaving it alone. If this takes, maybe I can share my screen and you can see right now.
Are you seeing mine?
You guys keep discussing. Give me a minute.
So I had thought about doing Google Docs because I work in that all the time and I love it. And then we could have just done it. I just didn't know for the board's purposes if that would have worked when you present. Because that part I don't know. So yeah, whatever we needed to do. If this works, I like it. If not.
Because I'm actually able to edit it online. That might be more my Office 365 thing. Are you guys seeing it here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
356 words. We're good.
What is it? 300?
Pretty wordy. We could just take out the, all the extras there.
We could probably take out that last pair, that last sentence in the last paragraph. We're willing to listen to less expensive proposals. Isn't that kind of understood?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good suggestion. 323, how about we do not support this plan. Is that simpler?
Yeah.
The thing I saw, I mean, I could, it's one word, but Andover has many items. It says so many items. You could just do many items and you could say, instead of be supported financially, just say funded.
Yep.
Yeah, I saw that too. Where is that?
That's who you're right. Oh, you were right there. One sentence up. And ever has so many items that need to be supported financially and funded that are already stretched the limit. So you could just say, Andover has many items that need to be funded. But, and I don't know about that are already stretched the limit, but like more along the lines of, or maybe we could just say with so many items that need to be funded.
And we are stressed the limit.
That need funding. Wait, yeah, wait a minute. Andover has many items.
Need to be funded.
But, um, or we could say we have many other items, you know, you know, might have a higher priority or something like that. I don't know.
That's the limit. The problem is this, this is unaffordable for us.
We, again, we couldn't even pass a modest increase to the school budget, to our own school budget.
What about the parentheses at the end as currently proposed, those three words? Do you feel we need that? Like it is our hope that this item is.
Just put it down. Yeah, we don't necessarily.
What am I doing? Yeah. What are we doing? There we go.
316, 313.
All right, we recently. I think it's important to give them info at the beginning. So you know what I mean? Because a lot of people didn't go. So that paragraph gives them what it's about.
The last three words of the first paragraph too, at this time.
Yeah, that's, I noticed that before. I forgot about, yep.
Oh, it looks so tiny now. No.
Now, of course I talked about adding something, so.
I know. What are you guys thinking?
Never mind.
Maybe that second paragraph went a little overboard on Andover. I have to read it again.
Just finish a long and grueling budget season.
Get rid of had, Andover just, we don't have.
And finally, and finally got a budget passed.
I'm working too much. I'm laughing. All right.
Got, not get.
Finally. Passed.
And yes, and finally passed a budget.
And over just, and over had just. Right?
I do know grammar. I think it's our changes. Let's see.
Sense with the, with the, with the sentence we took out in.
How about, how about a saying immediately after And Andover underwent a long and grueling budget press suffered a long.
Take out had. 300 words. We're done.
But the only thing is just remember that you all thought you wanted to mention something about this. Is it 70,000 a year or are we just gonna?
I'm backpedaling now.
There you go.
You know.
We could just say this proposal was announced. Well, I think any, any, anything we get. Anything we get to.
Proposal was announced.
Anything we keep it to, you know, to a concise message is probably better. And if we hit the point where you can say the impact is X, then we can do that, but.
Yeah.
Publicly.
I mean, the one way to do it that would be short would be in the, in the sentence that, in the first paragraph where you say, you know, the three towns would divide this debt. You could just throw a parenthetical. Uh, the three towns would divide this debt. You could just throw a parenthetical in, you know, Andover's share would be. X for ten years. That's not a ton of words.
To me, I personally like the three million sitting out there. To me, you see the smaller seven, you know, as, as I'm thinking this through, Rob and everyone.
Yeah, I know. It gives an opening to say, oh, that's not that much money.
Right, seventy thousand. Oh, if we split that up, that you go to those meetings, they talk, it's fifty dollars a taxpayer. They make it as small as can be. If you're throwing out three million five, I kind of like the impact of that, but I'm.
Think that number is impactful, that three point five million dollars. That's just a lot of money.
And that's right at the beginning.
You know.
Okay.
For something that we only have, what? A little over two hundred kids at the high school right now? So it's not even. Money that benefits the majority of the town.
We can probably take that out too. It's not really, they don't, they'll put it in there.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah. To probably get through proof. I'm a big proof reader. Like if this is going to be our letter, I'm just gonna, I'll listen, but I'm gonna proofread it again just to make sure.
I was on the board of select a meeting last night and, um, they opted not to come out. On any public declaration about the turf field. They're not in favor of it, but they didn't want to do anything formally.
Sure.
Up to date.
Diane, can I ask, didn't they ask us to move our meeting? Because they wanted the fourteen. I, I missed the meeting because I thought it was the fourteen.
I think what happened is they needed. Agents on the board of Ed. So the board of Ed meeting is also today at seven o'clock.
Right, right.
Oh, he, I think they needed to move it so agent could go to the board of Ed meeting. And not have the board of select a meeting on the same day as the board of Ed.
Okay.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, I, I just totally missed it. I'm gonna watch it, but, okay, thanks.
I thought they were gonna move it to Thursday is really where I thought that should go, but.
That's what I thought.
What do you guys think about removing the, this phrase at this time? If voters and orders who wanted or wanted or approved spending more money, it would certainly be to address more pressing safety needs, bridge and cover repairs.
Oh, I think it's a point. Oh.
Yes, at this time can go out, I think. It's just more concise. Cause bottom line is, nobody wanted to spend a nickel more in this town.
Right, right. For things, as she will articulate here, for things that are kind of, you know, critical infrastructure needs, not in a field.
And after the storm.
Nice to have.
Same with the bridge repairs and everything. Everybody's really kind of little.
How about, I don't think we'd pay in the amount requested either, do we? How about, is this a little more stronger since we do not support this plan, which will stretch our financial debt for the next ten years?
Yeah, or I, I don't even know, um, I would phrase financial debt. I might just say, you know, strain our budget. Or something like that. I'm not sure financial debt, like.
Strain our finances?
Yeah.
What are you guys?
Burden on our fine burden. Strain our. For the next ten years.
Now, the, that sentence, oh, that's, that's the other editorial comment. Um, we also believe the amount will likely be much higher. Uh, I don't really have a basis for saying that.
Yeah. It, how about it? It is our concern that the amount will be much higher due to required maintenance. So it says something like that.
Yeah, we're also concerned that makes, that softens it. So we're not just sort of definitively stating that the board believes that. That it's gonna go in over budget. It might, but I don't really personally feel like I can say that. And maybe higher instead of much, but, um, or could be, you could say could be instead of would be, will be, you could say could be. You know, or actual or final.
Something like that. Is that, what do you guys, we are also concerned that the actual, the actual cost will be much higher due to required maintenance and machinery. Needed to take care of the new field.
And I, we can say something about. I thought they said in the presentation, after ten years, they have to do something with it. Is, I don't know if it's replaced or something. It, the life, it doesn't have a twenty-year life.
I'd also, I'd also like to, uh, it's my recommendation that we change, it is our hope to, it is our recommendation. That this item be defeated at the referendum. Is that, that's a little more longer, I think.
Yeah, there you go. That we strengthened something instead of softening. Yes.
Hey, guys, can I ask a question? My power just went on my computer. Did you edit the part in the mid? I was like running. I was getting my power cord. Um, you were talking, I'm sorry, but about the, you left it in, it looks like. You know, pointing out what we wanted to spend money on. Was that what the discussion was?
Oh, no, no, no. That, that part's great. Nobody was, I don't think any of us wanted to do anything with that. There was an earlier little piece to that sentence. We just shortened.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's the most, the key part of the letter actually really is, is that look at all these other things that we're not funding. Cause we can't get it passed. We're behind on our ten-year plan.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, you know.
And I wanted to point out that we.
Give them to throw a tree work, you know, for instance.
We want to support everything. If, if I left out any, any funding thing that you all know from all the years, I, yeah, thank you.
Those, there's tons of, yeah, I think this is, uh, I think it's.
Uh, yeah, you've got, you know, bridge and culvert, road, tree work, community center. Andover school budget. I mean, that's, that hits all the high points. There's, it's not that there's nothing else in the budget I could think of, but that's.
Right.
You know, this is fine. It's, it's all the, the key things, I think. I think it's good. And I think we agreed that we'll sustain with the top line number. So I mean, to me, this is, uh. It's good to go. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it too.
I think we just say we, the members of the board of.
Excellent. I'm sending it to Mark Brinker first. He's editing away. I love.
I'm sorry. I, I don't, I, I hate to do this, but it's just.
No, no, no. Tell me what your background is. Did you say you're an English major?
Yeah, I was an English major and I spent a lot of time technical writing and editing and.
No, that's fine. It's.
Part of my job, but.
No, no. And I'm usually a good proofreader too. So I'm watching snip, snip.
Well, the problem is you can't proofread your own stuff.
Exactly. I was just having this conversation at work the other day. I'm catching, I was doing a settlement agreement draft today. And I got from a coworker repurposing it for my case. And I caught like two or three type, you know, little typos or scripts and I mentioned, I'm like, if this was my own document, I would read right over it, but because it's not mine, I see it.
Correct. I just think it's funny, you know, it took me down like four pegs, which is good.
You did a good job and we need something in front of us.
Looking for that. I just thought, you know, it is good to have everybody collaborate on it. And we needed a starting point, which was good, so.
Yeah, it's, you just, it's very hard to do your own to, to, to rework your own stuff, especially if you don't, if you're busy, which obviously you run around.
Oh, my God, to the max. So this was, oh, thank God, Rob knows I said this. I need a deadline and that's why I did. And I took every last minute of the deadline just because it's crazy. Yep.
Okay, do we want to read through this real quick? Just, just to make sure there aren't any other, sometimes reading, you come up with something and then. And then, uh, if we have any last minute edits or suggestions, uh, we're at two hundred eighty-eight words, um, right now. So it says to the editor, recently the RAM Board of Education and Regional School District Number Eight passed a resolution to appropriate. Three million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the installation of a new turf field, track and lighting at Ram High School. Put it in the Oxford comma here. And to authorize the issuance of bonds and notes not to exceed that same amount. If this were to pass, it's November second. Town referendums in Andover, Hebron and Marlboro, the three towns would divide this debt. We, the members of the Andover Board of Finance would like to publicly state that. Although we support high school athletics and the benefits to the student population, we are not in favor of this resolution. Andover just finished a long and grueling budget season and finally passed a budget with a zero increase for the fiscal year. Immediately following that, this RAM proposal was announced during the summer months when most of the taxpaying public is busier vacationing. Has stated in multiple town meetings, Andover has many items that need to be funded and their budget is stretched to the limit. If the voters Vandover had wanted or approved spending more money, it would certainly be to address more pressing safety needs. Bridge and covert repairs, necessary road and tree work, supporting a town community center for its residents. And certainly any Andover elementary school needs that are currently not funded. We do not support this plan, which will strain our finances for the next ten years. We are also concerned the actual costs will be much higher due to the required maintenance and the machinery needed to take care of the new feet. It is our recommendation that this item be defeated at the referendum on Tuesday, November second. Andover Board of Finance.
I like it.
Yep, good.
All right.
Um, I was like, I had a thought while we were going through this and it was in the first paragraph. I'm now trying to remember it. Um. Oh, so, you know, if this were to pass, the town referendums in Andover, Hebron and Marlboro. Just so that we don't confuse anybody, it's, you know, Andover could vote it down and it could still pass. And, cause I, I just had to explain this to somebody who was asking me about it. It wasn't a town resident thankfully, but somebody, I was just explaining the issue to, I was complaining to a friend. And they said, well, okay, well, what if Andover votes it down? Is that, you know, is it veto? I said, no, 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 no. Hebron and, you know, Hebron could just completely outvote us and we lose. Um, and I don't know if, if it could be phrased in such a way to make that clear. That's, that's the only thought I had when we went through this.
Good point. It's a kind of.
You could just say, you know, if, if, if a majority of the, of voters. In the refer, voting in the, if the majority of votes in the.
We could write here.
I mean, I mean, I'll tell you here. If a majority of the voters in the referendums. You know, vote in favor or something like that. Cause it just makes it clear that the cold here is we have to have, you know, a surge in Andover turnout voting no. You know? This is really nippy key, by the way. I, it's maybe unnecessary, but.
My first thought when you said that was it's, I feel like we're taking ownership for the other towns too, but, or explaining the process. So I, I think it does need to be explained because I agree with you. That everybody, it's total votes, right? Of the three town.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just like.
My understanding, unless, unless I'm wildly off base, but I mean, I'm pretty sure that's how all RAM referendums work.
Yep. And I was shocked that the other one passed so easily, like during our voting process, you know, our budget process and.
Oh, yeah. Welcome to, to the Andover Board of Finance. Um, the RAM budget basically always sails through.
I know.
Happens earlier, it happens early in the process.
Yeah.
Compared to the rest. And it's, it's always a done deal by the time we're sitting down trying to make ends meet.
It's shocking to me.
Perpetual frustration.
Shocking.
It's the majority of the voters in the three towns.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna say in.
The majority of voters in the three.
We haven't mentioned, we haven't mentioned the three towns. So I think what we do is just put it out there, so.
Yep.
Maybe just, yeah, put it right there. Like she, like Diane said, that's a good idea. That spells it out. But then this might, I don't want it, I also, and I'm saying this out in the public that people can watch this, but. We also don't want to rally the other side.
Well, they've already got their.
Yeah, they were already out there.
Oh, I know. I do.
I, I see them. I drive around, I see them. So they've, they're not, to be, to be fair, you know, it's not like. You know, they're trying to do this on the down low and in that sense, they are, they've got their signs up and trying to rally the yes votes, so.
Gotcha. True, true, true. Good point.
So I think there's no shame in us trying to.
We're doing our job.
You know, do it the other way. Yeah, we're doing our job. That's exactly right. Our whole purpose here is to look out for Andover's finances.
Yeah.
I saw one no sign in Hebron. That's all I've seen. Everything else is yes. Oh, yeah.
Well, they obviously coordinated a sign buying thing. Um.
Wonder who paid for all those signs? Must be. Built into the.
Donations, I assume.
Let's hope it's private, right?
Trying to remember the last time I saw a big sign thing was, uh, in Andover was the, when they wanted to do the natural gas project. Somebody coordinated a massive. Purchase of, you know, everybody bought signs for twenty bucks or whatever it was and over overnight, it seemed, there was a sign on practically every yard to vote no. So it can be organized on social media. It's, you know. It's, uh, I'm sure that the, I know when I was, I had my kids in, uh, in the Little League in, uh, Hebron for a while and. You know, you get, you get, I think there was an email that came out months ago urging a yes vote. So they, they kind of the sports people. In Hebron kind of, um, stick together on stuff, so to speak. Anyway, I think this is a great letter and.
That is the work. It's a majority of voters in Andover, Hebron and Marlboro vote to pass this measure. It's a November second referendum. The measure will pass.
Oh, the measure, the measure.
Yeah.
We've got two measures in there. Probably don't need them both.
It will pass.
Say it will pass, yeah.
That's why I read it aloud. I don't really like that either, honestly.
No, it's not great, but it works. Well, you could just take, they vote for this measure, the three towns would divide this debt.
How about if they vote yes and then I can.
Yes, let's.
Yeah, vote yes.
What's the measure? They might, yeah, yeah. The majority of voters in Andover, Hebron, Marlboro vote yes. That's perfect. At the November second referendum, the measure will pass. And the three towns will divide this debt. Should we call it something else? The project will pass? I don't know.
I don't know. I would prefer to legally.
Okay.
I think it's fine the way it is.
We're not in favor of this resolution. We should probably, of this. Appropriation or project.
I used a lot of wording from the RAM, you know, website.
Yeah, they passed the resolution, which took it to referendum.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so what, what are we voting on? I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of the exact terminology we'd use, but.
Yeah, I think this project or this expenditure, uh, gets it done.
Expenditure is probably better.
Yeah.
There you go.
Good idea.
Thanks. I have them occasionally. Not very often.
Is that it for the year then? No, just kidding.
For the record, it's right there. It's, it's in the minute, it's in the minutes now. I'm happy with it.
Want to read through the first paragraph one more time and then. Yeah, that's good.
A little passive language in that very last sentence is, it is, how about if we say instead of the dismeasure, that this item be defeated? How about is our recommendation that voters?
To vote no?
Kind of, that the, the voters vote, that, that the residents vote no at the referendum on Tuesday, something like that. It's a little strong.
Right.
Yes, direct. Yeah. Is our recommendation that the voters, we'll take all voters that vote no.
Residents vote no, capital.
Yes, yes. There you go. At the referendum on Tuesday, November second.
Bold, underline, anybody, anybody?
I don't know if that'll come out in the, uh.
I'm kidding. All right, so.
And we're still under three hundred words.
We, we're good here. Two ninety-five.
I have one more suggestion. Uh, where it says would divide this debt, um, should we put? I know we have to, we might go over in proportion to the town, each town.
I had that thought too.
You know.
And this is, this is similar to the seventy K discussion.
Yeah.
Cause it's more precise.
I'm not sure. It's more precise, but I don't know that it adds any, any real, you know.
Especially because Andovers is the smallest percent.
Smallest, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Or proportionally, maybe we'll divide this.
They assessed this debt, assessed, like an assessment.
I see where Louise is coming from, but I think the emphasis is still on the big, big.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, I totally had that same thought. Uh, it's exactly in line with my thought, my thinking before when I suggested the. Adding the raw dollar value. It's, it's saying the same thing and. adding the raw dollar value, it's, it's saying the same thing and does draw attention to you know, that we are the smallest of the three, I forget what our share is, whether it's, you know, twenty percent or something.
Something like, I have no idea.
Seventeen, I think that's right.
Yeah, something like that.
But the public is gonna be seeing this, did, does the public understand that it's not in proportion?
But it's not, it's not a splitting in three ways, it's not equal shares.
Yeah.
Share the debt.
But I feel like that's educating them, and that's not really our point right now, I, I totally understand where she's coming from. That's like telling them more information than they need to know right now, they need to know, this is not a good idea.
Well, yeah, I mean, I could go either way on this, but I like giving people lots of information and not trying to hide the ball or anything like that.
Clearly, I do, too, with my big letter, yeah, I hear you.
If you talk about the Ram formula, I think we're just gonna confuse the issue more.
We could say the three towns would be responsible for this debt.
Because they take on, yeah.
For this debt or something like that.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we could take the whole divide part out.
Yeah, that might be better. You could say share, three towns would share this debt.
Oh, there you go.
I like the idea of being responsible for this debt.
Colloquially, on the hook for.
You could say that.
I think responsible for is good.
And the residents would be responsible for this debt, also we could say, I don't know, it's making clear.
The evergreen word taxpayers.
Yes, we like that taxpayer word.
Ooh, we're at three hundred words now.
Bing, it's a sign.
All it done, is that what you're saying?
Huzzah!
So recently.
That sounds better, the taxpayer word, yes.
Issue for bonds and notes, not to exceed, it's a majority voter. Tomorrow, but yes, it's the number second referendum, the measure will pass, or we just say vote yes on November second.
Yep.
Oh, God, I hate even putting the word yes in there, though.
It's superscripted the comma, boo.
Thank you.
As we're saying, vote no down here, vote yes up there, I just, it's the majority of voters.
Yeah, word can't defeat me, I've been doing this too.
You'll have your comma.
Pass and the taxpayers, three towns will be responsible for this debt, I'll say will be.
Yep. I think we're getting an A on this project.
It's definitely, uh, you know, showing some collaborative skills, you know?
Well, I, I don't think we're done yet, we still have two more words we can add, so.
You could go down to the no bar and put two more no's in, oh, no, no, no.
Too much.
Just, you know, to be clear.
I'm good with it.
All right, I'm happy to.
I'm good. How about thank you at the end? Or is that two?
That's two words, it's genius.
How about respectfully?
Yeah. I'm pissed.
You're respectfully pissed, Diane. Oh, in fact, that would be two words, respectfully pissed.
Oh, my God.
I'm good, and, you know, in that vein, you think it's time to entertain a motion, Mark, to, you know, I'm happy to make that motion.
No, you could make a motion at any time, I think it's, it'd be a fine time to.
All right, let's, why don't we do that? I move that we present this letter as drafted to the River East for publishing in their next issue, in their next issue.
Second that.
Okay, Rob made the motion, Louise seconds, do we have any more discussion?
I have a quick question, um, their deadline for submissions are to be in the Friday paper are Tuesdays at noon. So, I mean, you probably already know that, but is, who's gonna do that and who's taking that on?
Oh, I'll do it, it, you know, just.
Okay.
As chair, I guess, that's fine.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to just, sorry to interrupt, I wanted to find the right time to ask. Um, but are you only submitting this to the River East, or were you expecting, um, you know, for it to be posted anywhere else on our town pages? I just wanted to know my role.
It's a good question, I think it would be good to post it as, with the meeting minutes, maybe, or I don't know that we need to have it in any particular, I don't think it needs its own page or something like that, or you could on the, there is, uh, you had put a link up at somewhere to the, uh, to the referendum, uh, the Ram Region Eight. You know, that, you had a page on there, we could put a, uh, I guess I just switched to it, we could put a link to it there, the link to the letter from the Board of Finance.
Posted on the town Facebook page?
I like that idea.
Should we wait for our official, I mean, we had this whole meeting, this whole setup for it to go to the, um, you know, River East? And then are you saying, once that's done, do all these secondary things? I agree.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we have, you know, this website page, we have the Facebook page, we have the town notification system. So I'm just asking which mediums you would want to share it on?
Oh, no. I'm asking.
Get it out there.
The board members, the timing, did we take the time to do this for the River East, or are we just gonna go ahead and just blast it everywhere first? I, I'm just trying to understand your.
I think we probably want it to hit the River East and then
That's what I thought.
That point, blast it wherever we can.
Perfect, thank you for clarification.
My take, thanks Amanda for asking that, by the way, I didn't even think of that stuff.
Yeah, of course, so, just let me know when I, when and where I should post.
It won't hit the River East.
So next Friday.
Yeah, so, yeah, what I would say is maybe next, maybe next Friday we post it. And the version we post will maybe else, I can send a version to Amanda that it says, instead of it says to the editor, I could say we can change that to, to the residents of the town of Andover.
Yeah.
Nice, yeah.
So it's a little clearer that we're addressing them directly.
Yep.
And that version could go on the, the website, um, and then this version could go to the River East, does that make sense?
All right, let's do it.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, I guess let's go to vote, um, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes, thank you, Rob, thank you, Louise. Okay, um, I will attempt to save this, so we, we all have it.
That would be good.
Nothing else, I'll be looking at the video, trying to type it, you know, uh, I'll be fine. Um, okay, um, back to our, um, agenda. Do we have any more discussion on the Ram multi-use turf field project? Okay, hearing none.
We pop up about Lindy, did you guys see that? Linda Fish is talking and then it disappeared? Did you see that?
Yeah, do, sir.
Okay, I didn't know, okay, if you had a comment.
Um, okay, uh, next agenda item is public speak, do we have any more public speak? Okay, seeing none, I guess we move to adjournment, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I saw Diane, Diane makes a motion to adjourn, does anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
Rob seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, the aye.
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 The opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, I will, uh, put the letter, save this.